Okay, good evening. It is six o'clock. I welcome you to the Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019 City Council Meeting, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, please.
Dave Bowman.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Roy Anderson.
Present.
Judy Ann Files.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
All council members are present.
Any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, of which I'm aware.
Alrighty then. Um, is there anybody that would wish to speak to anything that is not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on. And approval of the minutes, Council consideration of the minutes of August 20, 2019, regular City Council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the August 20th, 2019, regular City Council meeting as presented.
I'll second that. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. And it's going to be a brief agenda, so we'll get right into it. City Council consideration of ordinance 2485 on first reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, designating Montrose City Hall, 433 South First Street, Montrose, Colorado, as a City of Montrose historic property pursuant to 4-15 of the official code of the City of Montrose. And Virgil Turner, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Before you tonight is the very first designation of a historic property pursuant to the historic preservation ordinance that the City Council approved earlier this year. Really excited about this. It's, this property is a property you're well aware of, City Hall, and we have, this property is also on our national, on the National Register of Historic Places. We felt that this would be not only a symbolic first designation, but also one that we could work through the process on, from a staff level of getting properties designated. We have our second one in the pipeline, which is not a city building, and you'll be hearing about that at a future City Council meeting. I passed out a memo that I failed to get into the packet. It's on, I believe Michaela has put that on your, at your workstation. That's a memo that describes what we're doing tonight, describes the designation process. And I'd like to, since this is your very first one, I'd like to give you, maybe go through this memo with you, and talk about your action tonight, what your options are. This is a quasi judicial hearing, much like you hear from land use procedures. These are, these are procedures that you've entrusted to a commission that you've appointed to make a recommendation to you, the City Council, for final action on designations. As you may have heard this morning, designation, this designation hearing that's coming before you as an ordinance or as a first reading of the ordinance tonight, as Ann Morgan Thaler mentioned at work session today, you do not hear about these at work session because they are quasi judicial in nature, and it's done as part of the first and second reading of the ordinance. In your memo, I refer to, describe the process to this point. On July 23rd, 2019, the Historic Preservation Commission considered the application for City Hall as a designated historic property on the City of Montrose Historic Registry. The Commission voted unanimously in support of recommendation to the City Council of approval of this designation. There are findings of fact that were considered by the Commission. Those are stated in the memo that you have. Those findings of fact refer back to the actual ordinance and talk about the criteria requirements that are, that are in the ordinance that you approved that state what buildings can be on the registry. The, this, of course, this building, number one, is on the National Register. That's one of the criteria that allows you to add a property that's on a registry, both state or national registry, to be on the city's registry. That's really all that is required in this case. That's a very high standard. And so that in and of itself would have qualified this. We go on to state other eligibility criteria that the City Hall did meet, and those are listed in that memo as well. To keep this short, your actions tonight, according to the, to the ordinance and the code that's, in the municipal code, specifically, the City Council shall by ordinance approve, number one, approve with conditions, or third option is to deny the proposed application, and shall issue written findings based on the Commission's recommendations. You could consider the findings are in the staff memo that I provided to you, or you could make your own findings. And so with that, staff recommended approval to the Commission. The Commission agreed with those findings and prepared to answer any questions. I believe it would be appropriate to open a hearing on this topic.
And I hereby open a hearing. And I'll start with comments from Stat, or Council. Yes.
I don't have a question, because we, it seems pretty straightforward, but it's exciting to have our first historic building, we are City Hall. Thank you for the work.
So I just wanted to ask for my own kind of clarification. Suppose another building downtown, an owner came and wanted to have it designated, or perhaps a house out of one of these neighborhoods, would we go through exactly the same process? Council would get a letter like this from the Historic Commission, they would make a recommendation, and so this is an exact model of what will happen in the future.
This is what this process will look like. It, if a property meets the designation criteria set forth in the ordinance, you know, we would, you know, staff reviews those before it goes to the Commission. If we were, we would work with the property owner to make sure that we agree with this. The Commission would ultimately hear this and make a recommendation to City Council. This is approved by your action as in your packet is an ordinance. This ordinance is an important document. It becomes law, and this property, once it is approved on second reading, if you choose to approve it, there's actually a recording of that ordinance with the county clerk. Any, any land title report that's run shows that as an exception, so it notifies any potential purchaser. Likely, the City Hall is not going to be for sale anytime soon, but as you mentioned, a private property, this would be on their title chain as a requirement that would stick with the title unless it's delisted, which...
And when the Historic Commission meets to discuss one of these properties, that's an open meeting, a hearing. The citizens can come and make comments, just like at a planning commission meeting.
Exactly. It's a quasi judicial hearing as well. They listen to the evidence and presented with the evidence by, through the application. All of them hear the same evidence all at once and make a recommendation as a body.
Thanks. This is learning for all of us.
That's good, yeah. So yes, it is pretty much like a planning commission procedure.
Very good.
Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, I will close the hearing, and I would entertain a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion that we, let's see, where's the wording? That we approve on first reading ordinance of the City of Montrose, designating Montrose City Hall, 433 South First Street in Montrose, Colorado, as a City of Montrose historic property pursuant to Section 415 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose.
Second.
Please vote, and the voting lights are still flashing. There we go. Please vote. And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And coming up next, public sales safety, public safety sales and use tax ballot issue. We are going to have two votes. We'll be first voting on the ordinance that speaks to what's going to be in the ballot language, and then the resolution which contains the ballot language. So we are at this point looking at ordinance 2486, first reading. City Council consideration of ordinance 2486 on first reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, imposing a public safety sales and use tax, establishing the Public Safety Sales and Use Tax Fund, and limiting the use of these monies from the fund solely for the support in the level of service for public safety in the city, making conforming amendments to the Official Code of the City, and requiring voter approver approval prior to the effective date of this ordinance. And we'll turn it over to City Attorney Stephen Alcorn and Police Chief Blaine Hall.
After all the conversations we've had on it, I'm not really sure what to say now other than, as directed, we have the ordinance that would change the municipal code, and then the, the necessary resolution that would refer the ballot question to the voters. There's, I think, based on some conversation, there's a couple amendments people have been talking about, and I guess I'll just sit back and watch what happens.
Okay, and I will open a hearing on this. And I think we're going to start with Council comments, as there are some minor changes that may occur at this point.
May I start?
Please.
I'm a little concerned about page four, which is 515-40, coming down to below parentheses five. I would like to suggest that we add the words, "In accordance with the city charter, the city manager in coordination with the police chief shall determine public safety expenditures which qualify for payment from the Public Safety Sales and Use Tax Fund." I would like that clarification, that this is in line with city charter.
Okay, I can accept that as an amendment to this language.
So I just have a question. In that sentence, it says shall determinate. Should it be determine or determinate? I'm not an English major.
Determinate is, is an appropriate word used in that sentence.
Okay, thank you.
The lawyer has his thumbprint on this.
He has spoken. Any other comments from Council at this point before we open it up to the audience? At this point, I would open it up to the audience for any comments on the ordinance. David?
Well, my comments are going to actually address both, as I read them, so if that's okay, I'll go ahead and do that. And I made the prepared statements, so please excuse me while I read them, instead of trying to recite it off my memory. So I'm Dave Stockton, 3009 Cook Drive. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilors. As you know, I was a member of the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee. I'm not here to speak to you as a committee member, but rather as a citizen of the City of Montrose. When my wife and I arrived here nearly five years ago, Montrose was a quaint little town. It's changed since then, and not all for the good. We have found used syringes in our local park. One of our neighbors was convicted of pedophilia and now resides in jail. And not a day goes by where we don't read about some criminal activity taking place across town. We all read the negative press regarding the proposed tax increase. It's my belief there are those in the city that will not accept the reality that Montrose has changed, and that measures have to be taken to address the significant increase in crime in our community. Their arguments come in allegations of budget mismanagement. You know, I know, and I believe fair-minded people across the city know, that's just not true. Mr. Mayor and fellow councilors, I ask that you support ordinance 2486 and Resolution 2019-12. Give us, the citizens of Montrose, a chance to vote on this much-needed modest sales tax increase in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson?
John David Nelson, 3246 County Road 22, Montrose, Colorado, 81403. Speaking for myself only, I hate to say that I agree with that.
Very good.
I think that's absolutely outstanding, and also, also correct. I just, from my opinion. I thought there might be one other possible change, and that related to using the term facilities, as to, as opposed to just a single structure?
I believe that's in the resolution, sir.
Okay.
So, we have heard you.
Okay. Three sailors are the sole survivors of a shipwreck. They're in the middle of the ocean in a lifeboat with a hole in it. One sailor rants and raves about the ship's captain causing the wreck. The second spews hatred about the maker of the lifeboat that left a hole in it. The third, very intelligently, intimitly suggests they ought to find a way to plug the hole and then talk about the responsibility and how they got there. Gee, doesn't that sound familiar? The last few publications sort of provoked the whole comment. About three weeks ago on Monday, I came to town, had to take my wife to the hospital for some testing. I called in an accident. I was just coming up Townsend, Townsend and Williams Drive. I called in. So there's a cop on his way. About six o'clock, I stopped at a business on South Townsend to have something I happened to own repaired, so I don't identify the business. Young lady was there by herself, seemed terribly happy to see me, and told me that there'd been a transient out there watching her for the last half hour. He hadn't done anything, but she was truly fearful. I walked out the door, he moved on, and everything was wonderful. I went to the public, public presentation that Blaine and his folks were putting on, and heard about yet another crack house. Well, I needed some coffee after that, so I stopped at a usual place on South Townsend, and I noticed a car sitting right next to their back door. There's never been a car there in the 12 years I've been buying coffee there at night. And it turns out the night manager, the lady, was fearful because there'd been so much crime in the area and problems at the gas station. Well, that took care of that day. The next day, I walk in, I needed a hook for some chains of mine, and a major business owner in town tells me almost spontaneously, he can't leave anything outside. Doesn't depend on the size of the chain, doesn't depend on the size of the lock. He cannot leave anything outside because it'll be stolen. And that's everything from huge fans, et cetera. That's a terrible commentary. People working in some degree of fear and situation in terms of theft. The police blotter is a perfect example of it. When we started Crime Stoppers five years ago, it was about a page. It is now three pages, single spaced, and it grows every month. And obviously, they're not all crimes, but there are activities of our police department. They start with a, with a shift of 12 hours, but it's not at all uncommon to be working 14, 15, and more. This thing has got to pass because it's really the only viable solution that we have to our increasing crime. I hate taxes. I'm retired. I really, really hate taxes, particularly new taxes, but this one has to pass. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Phoebe?
Gosh, I hope you don't have to shut me up. I hate that. So I am Phoebe Binziger. I live at 647 North Third Street. Virgil, quite possibly one of the homes you were just talking about, so we should talk about that. But thank you so much for allowing me to come and talk to you guys tonight. I would like to start by saying thank you to the City Council for having the foresight and the diligence to establish a Blue Ribbon Citizens Advisory Board in Safety. As you recall, this application process started in December. Meetings started in January and ended in May. I would also like to commend the Council in asking the city to apply, or the citizens of Montrose County and, the citizens of the city and the county, to apply for this board. In other words, this was not a handpicked board, and again, I thank you for that decision. And as you know now, I was chosen to be a part of this board. I also want to thank the police department for hiring a facilitator to facilitate this board at a cost of half of what's been reported, allegedly reported at 15, up to $30,000. I don't know if you guys know that or not, but you, that kind of money was not spent for this facilitator. Also, I, as a member of this now defunct board, would like to thank the City Council for stepping away from this five months process which the advisory board attended, and not attending or having any say in these meetings. And I know, I know some of you better than I know others, and that was probably hard for you to not, to not interject or attend these meetings, but I appreciate the fact that you just let us go for that. We had access to all city budget with this meeting. We had police stats. We could, we could recall, we could ask that they be represented. We, no question was turned down. All of our questions were answered. We spent hours debating and discussing, all to reach the consensus that you received in May, which our consensus was that you increased with the city sales tax. Now, the amount that you guys then decided on a two-hour meeting later, as you know that. So for the majority of the people that I've talked to in this past six months about this that's happening, we pretty much agree that our police department is a stellar department. And we all agree in the rise in crime and influx of drugs, and we're going to have to do something for our police safety issues in the future. Something has to be done. But then that's where some people say, but this sales tax is not right, blah, blah, blah. Well, to that, I say, thank you for considering this, but you also have to know you can't have it both ways. I mean, you either decide to do this, or else, I hate to think what may happen. So whether you're a Democrat or Republican, you're an old person, or you're a new person, I'm not looking at anybody, but, or whether you're new to Montrose, or you've just been here for years, we all have the same skin in this game. And I appreciate you recognizing that. There's now a new board out that's, one community safer together. It's not a board, it's a committee, which will actually, if you guys pass this tonight, start up tomorrow. So you'll be seeing yard signs, and we're going to hit the ground running.
Phoebe?
So I know, David, give me a minute. So, anyway, I just want to say thank you, that it took a lot, and these decisions were not made quickly, and yeah, we're going to go with it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
My, my wife reminded me tonight as I was leaving the house that I've never been able to say anything intelligent in three minutes, so I'll give it a whirl. But back in early June, I had the privilege to come before you with the report of the Public Safety Committee. We all know what the report said, what the recommendations were, the ordinance and resolution you're about to consider tonight. If you adopt, we'll fulfill the recommendation, begin to fulfill the recommendation of the, of the committee. And so I encourage you to, to vote in favor of the ordinance and in favor of the resolution. And I also want to thank you for your service. We, we thank military people for their service. We thank police officers for their service, but you deserve a thank you also for being willing to step up to the plate, seeing a problem that exists in this community, and being willing to do something to, about it, and take the heat in the process. And I thank you for that. We pass this tonight. We've only just begun. And as I have said to many people in the past, this is like Rome burning. We can debate, and we can debate, and we can debate, but as we debate, the crime continues, and it increases, and it's not going to go away until we do something about it. Your passage of this ordinance and resolution tonight will be the first dose of water poured on that fire, and I encourage you to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none. Any more comments from Council before I close the hearing? Hearing is closed. I would entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to pass ordinance 2486 on first reading, amended the way my statement before, which included city charter.
Perfect. Do we need to say it again?
Do you want me to do it all again?
Sure, and then I'll second it.
Okay, I'd like to amend the section under, I'm sorry, can you speak up? 5.5.40. I'd like to amend that last paragraph, kind of in the middle of the page. So it'll say, "In accordance with the city charter, the city manager in coordination with the police chief shall determine public safety expenditures which qualify for payment from the Public Safety Sales and Use Tax Fund."
Okay, and I second the motion.
I believe somebody else was wanting to make a amendment on the facility.
That's under resolution.
That's on both.
Oh, it's on both?
Oh, it's, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Okay. I'll hold up.
Make your amendment?
Well, it's part of one motion.
It's part of my motion, but you'll have to tell me where that word comes into in this one.
We can accept this as a friendly amendment.
I mean, it's page...
It's right above it.
It's page four, it's paragraph five.
It's that bullet point five that immediately proceeds.
So mine already says facility. You want to change it to facilities?
This is what Council had said they wanted changed to.
Oh, I see.
Okay, my second amendment to my motion. Bear with me. Funding costs associated with a public safety facility, including but not limited to lease purchase payments to provide facilities for the police department.
Okay, I can accept that as a friendly amendment, and we can continue. Okay, so I would like to, to second her motion with both of those amendments as read. Thank you. And...
I just want to, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add some background so people watching know what we're talking about, so that the reason for that change is in this... So the reason for that change is, in this language, it talks about one public safety building. But in all of our presentations to the public, we've talked about a cost savings measure, which would be an annex building to do the non-emergency-related things at a much cheaper cost per square foot than the actual law enforcement agency that has to meet federal building standards as an emergency building. So the per-square-foot cost is a lot higher to do that. So we're changing it from one building to facilities because that allows us to have flexibility there.
And that passes unanimously. And moving on, we have Resolution 2019-22. City Council consideration of Resolution 2019-22, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Montrose, Colorado, submitting to a vote of the qualified electors of the city at a coordinated election held on November 5, 2019, a ballot issue authorizing a public safety sales and use tax, setting the ballot title and content for the ballot issue and providing other matters related thereto. And I'm going to open it up to discussion, then I will, I'm going to open it up to council discussion, then public discussion, and then back to council. So, council, and do we have one resolution language cleanup?
In the ballot.
In the ballot language, then, we need to change that same statement. Funding costs associated with public safety building, including but not limited to lease purchase agreements to provide facilities for the police department. Right?
With public safety buildings, including but not limited to lease purchase payments to provide for facilities?
The, we're doing away with buildings entirely.
Please speak up.
Okay, so we will be amending the language. If Judy Ann agrees to do this, I'm just going to read this.
Well, I'm just making a comment right now.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
We need to change that language to funding costs associated with a public safety facility, including but not limited to lease purchase payments to provide facilities for the police
Yes, that makes it the same as the ordinance then.
Okay, we can take that as a friendly amendment. Any further discussion by council? Public comment? Seeing none, council, any final thoughts, comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion adopting Resolution 2019-22 with the change in wording on that one section for funding.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Excuse me, I second it.
And that passes unanimously. We will be going for an election on November 5, 2019, to increase our sales tax by .58% to adequately fund our public safety. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that, do you realize, now that this question has been certified, city employees can answer questions, but we cannot advocate for the position. We cannot expend any city funds to do so. But I do believe the chief is going to be taking some vacation days to make some presentations yet, but we're under some pretty strict rules on what we can do and how we can act at this point, so.
And can you clarify the role of elected officials in regard to that?
You guys have fair reign. You can even be kicking in some money. But you can advocate as much as you want, you're elected officials, or you can not advocate, but that's completely up to you.
And there would be no, I mean, I could advocate wearing my name tag. I mean, there's nothing about, okay, thank you.
Could we continue with that clarification? So if someone does say Chief Hall or Manager Bill Bell out there, it won't be that they're using city time, they're using their vacation time to do that? And that's allowable?
That is allowed. The only person who's not happy is Mrs. Hall.
She's never happy anyway, so.
But now, if you see a police officer on the street, or a chief or Bill, and say, "Hey, can you explain this budget situation, or there's this I don't understand," they can answer a question, but they just can't advocate.
So they can speak to facts, they just can't speak to a position on a ballot issue, a yes or no position?
Any further questions, comments on that? All right. We have a big job ahead of us, council, and I know that everybody here is prepared to take this to a victory party on November 6. With that, I will entertain a public information report.
I think we're going to have Commander Matt Smith come up and give a little information to the City Council.
Mr. Mayor, councilpeople, thank you very much for having me. I just wanted to update you on an interesting training that we're going to have next week, September 9 through September 12, regarding threat assessment training for the school district. City Montrose Police Department has partnered with the school district, the Center for Mental Health, and the Montrose County Sheriff's Office to bring the Salem-Kaiser Threat Assessment Model to town here so we can better manage threats within our school district, and then in the future, threats as adults in our community. So the first two days are Level 1 Threat Assessment Training for frontline officers and supervisors and school resource officers. The second day is Level 2 Threat Assessment for investigative team. And then the third, the fourth day, rather, will be the community overview, which all of you are invited to go if you're interested. John Van Driel is the person that developed this threat assessment model back in 1998 in Salem, Oregon, and they've had huge success with it as far as managing threats within our school districts. So we think pretty highly of him. We've actually done some job shadowing in Oregon with Mr. Van Driel and watched his program in action, and it's very, very interesting. It's going to help us keep our schools safe. It's going to give our school resource officers the tools that we need to make sure that we manage threats, not just on the front end, but then on the back end as well. And I think that's where the crucial part of threat assessment takes place, making sure that we don't just seek expulsion, but we manage that threat after the fact because one way or another, those threats are going to be present in our community. So the overview lasts two hours. It's from 9:00 to 11:00 in the morning, and it's going to be at the Montrose County Event Center. So if any of you want any information about that, you can certainly contact me. I have a flyer for it, and I just wanted to pass that information along in case you wanted to stop by and see what that's all about. The second part, well, the overview is tailored for folks just like you, community leaders. So, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Mr. Mayor, I've got one additional thing for PIO. Just kind of a wrap-up, as I spoke to you earlier today in work session, and maybe a thank you, too. The city in July conducted three public safety presentations. In August, ending today at noon, the city team conducted 30 public safety presentations. And I would just like to thank all of you and all the city staff that worked so diligently on those things and on this presentation as we turn it over to Phoebe. There are a few more presentations tentatively scheduled, but I will let Phoebe make you aware of those as they come up. And with that, once again, thanks, and I appreciate it, and our department does as well.
Thank you, sir. You've been an excellent leader, just an inspiration. You are so passionate about this. Listening to you those 30 times, it never got boring. So thank you very, very much for the heart that you have in this.
Thank you.
I think we have to thank your wife for allowing you to come out, too.
It's a team effort. It really is. Everybody involved, so.
And I'd like to recognize Kendall Kramer, our grant coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Just wanted to make you aware of our most recent grant that we received. You probably have already heard about it in the press release, but it was a grant from Livwell, Colorado, for $5,000 through their Healthy Eating and Active Living Cities and Towns Campaign Small Grants Program. And that $5,000 will be matched with $10,000 from the city to improve the crosswalk at Uncompagre and Main Street with some of the pedestrian flashing lights, an improved crosswalk on both sides, that inner, on the Townsend, excuse me, the east, now I'm getting really confused, the Main Street, that crosswalk crossing across there. Does that make sense? So not the crosswalk that's running east and west, but the one that's running north and south on both sides will be improved. And so we're really excited for that. There's about 8,100 vehicles that come through that area every day through that section of town, so it's really improving the pedestrian friendliness of our downtown. There's already, as you know, just north or just west of there at Cascade and Main, there's already improved crosswalk there. And so the idea is, is as we continue to improve the crosswalks, motorists will be more alert that people are trying to cross there. Sometimes it can be nerve-wracking getting across, and so I think this is a great project, and we certainly appreciate the support of Livwell, Colorado. With that being said, I can take any questions.
I just think it's another great example of how we help fund public safety all the time. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, so many signs that summer's almost over, kids are back at school, the football team's playing, youth soccer started tonight, I got my tie on, but we got one more Montrose Summer Music Series, and I'm really excited because one of the, I think, a great addition, and we start every one of the Montrose Summer Music Series with the National Anthem, and it really helps sort of display the talent that we have in this town. And this Friday night, Vocal Effects, the a cappella group from Montrose High School, they perform the National Anthem at the home football games, and they're coming out to the Montrose Summer Music Series to perform, to solicit donations. You know, last year, they went to Texas for an event, I think they went to New York City for an event, really talented group of kids. And so I'm real excited to have them at the Montrose Summer Music Series so more of the town can see what those kids do. We got a great band out of Albuquerque, a Tex-Mex Cajun Blues Band. They got an accordion in the band, they'll probably be playing pokers, too. So Felix y los gatos from Albuquerque is a headliner. Ghost River Band is the opening act, so I hope to see everybody for the final Montrose Summer Music Series at Black Canyon Golf Course. And I truly appreciate the effort and support we get from Tom Young at the golf course and from everybody at the city. I personally want to say thank you.
If we got any more, Pocket Park?
Pocket Park is done for the year. We'll see you the first, second Tuesday in June 2020. It's been a very, very successful year. Can't wait to do it again. We got a lot, a lot of great comments. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a second.
Let's get out of here.